The comment bar on the right, we will be recording this for all of our families. And we will put this out on a YouTube for tomorrow. And so any family that was not able to attend or get on tonight, they will be able to get on tomorrow. And I'll send that out and you know, I'm sure our entire conversation will be able to help whoever. And so if you've got good questions that are good of the group at the end, please feel free to put those in the chat bar. And Ms. Learman is kind of facilitating our conversation tonight and she'll be helping me with any questions that are asked. We have a lot of staff on this evening, which is awesome to see. And they have been a big part of the reason we're able to open. We have the most amazing staff in the world and they're tireless workers and they want the best for our kiddos. And they'll be able to help me answer any questions we have tonight and feel free staff to pitch into the conversation as we go. So I'm going to share my screen with you and we'll kind of go from there. Can you all see that?
Yes.
Okay. So again, I'm Jamie McCarty, I'm the principal at Victor Point and it's an honor and a privilege to serve you each and every day. I know 96% of our families, but we do have a few new families that are new to us this year. And I can't wait to meet you in person. But first, just want to thank you for your patience, your grace and all of this. It has been a difficult year for everyone and we are all aware of that. And we are all doing the very best we can with what we have. And we realize that from you at home and I hope you realize that from us at school. But we want to be as transparent as possible in our reopening. And just, you know, just a caveat, everything we discuss and talk about tonight, I just want you to know that nothing is in stone. It seems like every day, everything changes and turns. And so I hope I give you good information that guides us. But as we go next week, I'll hopefully have a little more detail and a little more information for you. But each week I hope that I can get closer and closer to really what it's going to look like. We want to make sure the process is smooth as possible for you. And that is our goal. I can't guarantee it'll be fully smooth, but we will shoot for that. So tonight I just really want to plan on discussing what the hybrid model overview, just kind of what it looks like as your kids return to school, kind of what the operational blueprint is and what our school guidelines will be moving forward. And what kind of the operational, I'll go into that. Some safety reminders, some important dates, soft start orientation, and then we will have the end for questions. So what will hybrid look like? It will, students will attend full two days a week, in-person instruction. And we'll work at home on teacher-directed assignments on the three other days. So half of each class will attend in an A cohort, which would be like a Tuesday, Thursday, and a B cohort, which would be Wednesday, Friday, based on last name, A through K and L through M. And we've had a few families that need to mix and match and based on kind of their work and what needs to happen, we've had to slide a few kiddos around. But for the most part, that's kind of what the cohorts are made up of. Tuesday through Friday will be basically regular school hours, 8:30 to 3:00. And our Mondays will continue to be learning on self-directed at-home for Mondays. And so Mondays kind of look, you know, depending on the teacher and what, we're trying to still get all kids together for possibly a morning meeting on that Monday, getting everything squared away. Having the kids all together at once is important, so they're with all their classmates. But Mondays will still look similar and Tuesday through Friday would be A, B cohorts and teachers will be teaching full days at the school. Masks and six-foot distancing will be enforced on campus for all staff and students at all time, including PE and recess. Only essential visitors, volunteers may be on campus. And you might wonder what an essential visitor is. That's basically our ELL instructors, our speech therapists, school district employees that need to travel from school to school to still serve our students would be most of our essential visitors. So that's kind of what that looks like. I know many of you parent volunteers feel like you're essential visitors. You are definitely very, very important to us and we miss that. But that wouldn't, ODE wouldn't consider that an essential visitor. And then schedules and other details from our hybrid will be coming to you just by classroom teacher of what the day looks like, what you need, all that kind of stuff. But more of that will be coming very, very soon. And that's kind of a brief makeup of what a hybrid schedule might look like. We just have a couple of students that are going to remain in comprehensive distance learning. And so I thought I'd just put a little piece in on what that still looks like. School would kind of look very similar to their setup now. They will definitely have a different teacher if they were into a CDL and stayed into a CDL. All of our staff will be back in the building instructing kids. I've got the question, could we be CDL at some point and then move into hybrid later if we felt more comfortable? And I guess the answer there would be yes, but we would not suggest that happening. Kids would get further and further behind for where we feel like they need to be in our school. And it would be really hard to catch them up from a CDL coming from some teacher that we don't know what's happening and getting them into Victor Point School and caught up. So I have a link there too, that would be very informational if you'd like to take a look at that as well. So what is our operational blueprint? It is a blueprint that is 26 pages long. We've been working on it since the start of summer when we thought we might come back. And it has kind of morphed over the year. We just got back with our blueprint team about two weeks ago. Our team's kind of made up of teachers at our school, classified staff, some parents at our school, myself, and our school nurse. And that document basically guides our reopening plan. And it hits everything from arrival dismissal to PE to lunches to recess to playground. All of our bathrooms are six-foot distancing. What does returning to school look like? That blueprint is what our school will look like. And it's very, very, very detailed and it keeps me up at night. And I really worry about hitting every guideline. Like it stops with me, right? If we don't follow the blueprint or something doesn't go well or we're not doing something okay, that's on me. And so it's really important to me that our team, our school understands what our blueprint is, understands how we move through the hallways, how we move into the bathrooms, how we have recess, how our cohorts work. And we will know that blueprint back and forwards. But it'll take some time for our staff to practice, right? We have one day a week, which is Mondays by ourselves, that teachers are lesson planning all day. They're preparing for a new week. We have meetings, we have staff meetings, we have team meetings. Plus we have to figure out how to basically go through our blueprint and practice. Because kids don't show up the first day and everyone knows what to do and how to do it. So we have a lot of work to do there. We will publish our blueprint on our website. For anyone that would like to see that when it is finalized, I'll take that. Next week, we have cabinet touring our Victor Point building and they're going to go through our blueprint and I'm going to take them through that. And our school board and cabinet at the district office will approve that. And once that's approved, I will post that to our website. And you guys can get on and take a look at how we're handling situations, how we're handling students that are sick or anything like that. It's a very comprehensive piece and an important piece to our reopening. So you'll hear a lot about the blueprint and as we move forward. And if you ever have any questions on your child's safety or health or precautions or, you know, it handles the bus and how far kids can be apart from each other and how much the bus is sanitized. What are playground balls? What happens at the end of the day when this cohort is done using these balls? We have electric static sprayers that we've purchased that will spray every piece of equipment down, every piece of our playground equipment down at the end of each day. And I think, I just want you to know how serious we are for that safety and wellbeing of every child and every staff member in our school. So I probably went too long on the blueprint, but I think it's super important. So just some safety information. Again, I stated earlier, masks are required, all staff and students all time. PE, recess, anytime. There'll be certain times for mask breaks. We'll have a mask break spot in every classroom in our school. There'll be mask break possibilities outside when kids are away six foot. It'll be a nice time to pull down a mask and breathe. Walking the track by yourself is a nice time for a mask break. There will be times, kids will have water at their desks. And anytime they're feeling like, oh boy, I need a breath, this mask killing me. They pull their mask down, they take a drink of water and it's a great time for a mask break. So our kids will be very hydrated, I guarantee it. They'll be, they'll need, they'll need a lot of mask breaks, I think. You know, just social distancing at all times. It's pretty amazing, our kinders and first graders are in our school right now, basically in a hybrid format, but two days or two hours a day. And so they're basically coming every day to school at this point, A and B. Full classrooms, about 10 kids a classroom at times. And they are doing amazing. I mean, I can't even tell you like, if a kindergartner and first grader can social distance, keep their mask on, learn, they've been going down for some PE with Ms. Traeger, they're phenomenal. They line up, they understand what's six feet. We have dots on the floor. They walk down the hall as airplanes and it shows how six feet they are. And they've been doing it for two weeks, they're ready. So I know we're going to be fine. Hand washing a lot. Your kids will probably come home, they'll need some lotion when they get home. Because, I mean, so they'll come into our school hand wash. Anytime they're done with a project, they'll hand wash. We have sanitizers in every entry point of our building. We have sanitizer in our classrooms. Teachers will meet students every morning with sanitizer, ready to start the day as they enter from the bus. They will, so just know that's a big part of the day and we will be taking care of that. There's cleaning and disinfectant procedures that are put in place all day long in our school with bathrooms high area frequency spots. We are adding a daytime custodian for a certain amount of hours along with our night custodian. We've had it open for two weeks without any applicants, but we are really hoping that we get, we have that budgeted. So we'll have a custodian there wiping surfaces and taking care of things throughout the day. And then we'll also have our nighttime custodian that will fully go through our school and sanitize every piece in every classroom. We want our kids to dress warm when they return because classrooms will have windows open and ventilation. All the ventilation through our district has been gone through by our district maintenance and facilities. Any rooms or spots where they feel like might not have enough, there's been full filtration systems put into place in our school. And we're keeping our cohorts very small and very stable so that kids aren't interacting with other cohorts and, you know, entire school. Some important dates, and again, I will post this tomorrow and I will send this out to each one of you so you can get on and look at these dates anytime you want. So I'm going to move through these fairly quick. But just remember that Monday is not a holiday in the Silver Falls School District. Our kids should be attending school. And so I just wanted to put a reminder there, that is not a day off for our students or our staff. We are teaching that day and that is a day of learning. February 18th, next Thursday, is our next town hall. And we will meet every Thursday at 6 o'clock until you guys feel like you've heard enough. And February 19th, that is the last day of K-5 limited in-person instruction. So right now, we have K-5 kids showing up to our school that are really needed. And but our district is taking some time off right before we move to hybrid so we can get our schools ready, our classrooms ready, all the final details before kids return in-person full-time. So the 19th is the last day for K-5 limited in-person instruction. The 22nd through the 26th is kind of, we're going to dial our school in, you know, get it all ready, get all classrooms, everything we need ready. Our next town hall will be February 25th at 6 o'clock. And then I'll go through what the orientation kind of week looks like, the soft start next. That's going to be March 1st through the 5th. And then our K-5 will begin March 8th, really the 9th, which is that Tuesday. So we'll begin, you know, full hybrid instruction on that week. And then March 12th is our last day for 6-8 limited in-person. And then we'll have an orientation week. And then it's kind of a weird deal, we'll have an orientation week, spring break, and then we'll come back after the kids have forgot everything we orientated them. They'll come back like they didn't hear anything. And but they'll be excited to be in school and we'll reteach all of that again the next week. March 29th through April 2nd, 6-8 hybrid begins. So that's kind of the timeline, we're going to hit those timelines. We would be ready tomorrow if they said our kids could come back tomorrow. So just know our staff, our school, our classrooms, we are ready. And we have taken the necessary steps, detail, communication, everything that we need to be ready for kids. What that orientation week, that's kind of a weird week. And I guess it's kind of the week where you would think kids could just come back and go to school and be fine. But in all honesty, they can't. And there's a lot of learning and there's a lot of teaching that needs to happen with our guidelines. And so here's what that week looks like for both K-5 and 6-8. Monday and Tuesday, it'll be regular comprehensive distance learning, just what they're doing right now. But our staff will be doing much more PowerPoint with them, live videos of what our school looks like. They will be taking them through the training of what it will look like when they come back to school. So they will talk through every procedure those two days along with, we'll back off learning a little because we'll have to discuss and take more time with procedure and coming back to school. And then we're actually going to run full days Wednesday and Thursday. And so once we've talked that through, showed them what it looks like, we need to get them to school. And I've heard a few things like, man, is a kid going to be ready for school, a full day in a mask, eight hours? Yes, they will be, I promise you. And we will make sure they can have as many mask breaks as they want. We will keep it safe, but kindergartners are ready right now. So we'll run a full cohort. Actually Wednesday will be the B cohort because it's Wednesday. And Thursday will be the A cohort. And we've done that so that we can come back Friday as a school. And number one, spring break for the middle schoolers, half of you will be gone on that Friday anyway. So we don't want kids to have that be their only chance and parents. So we're hoping you plan around that a little bit. But we're also going to use that Friday as a day of learning for our staff. Like we just went through two full days of hybrid implementation. What is a school, can we learn from that? How can we improve by the following week? So that will give us a chance to take a look at that. So Friday will be a regular comprehensive distance learning day. It will be the last kind of day like that. And so that's what the orientation soft start looks like. And I didn't want to overwhelm anyone this evening. That would be the last thing I'd want to do, but I did want to get a lot of information to you. So I would just like to open it up at this time from, again, I'd like to stay out of the deep weeds. But like if there's some questions that we can like immediately pop up with anything that we could all learn from, I'd love to have that conversation. Again, I'd like to use the chat if possible, but if some parents just want to step up and ask, that's great.
So the first question was, will the kids?
One second.
Hey Megan, you can answer that question.
I could. I'll answer the first one, so then otherwise we will have to ask for jokes or something. The question was, will the kids need to bring their electronics with them to their in-school days? Yes, they need to bring them fully charged. There will be some charging stations in the classroom. But those, either the iPads or the Chromebooks, depending on the grade level, need to come back and forth to school each day.
The charging stations are very limited in the classrooms, so it would be really helpful if they come fully charged each morning.
I can probably answer the next one too, but I can wait for Jamie.
He had too much coffee beforehand, apparently.
Now he left the meeting, he's just wanting me to answer all of them. I think he pushed hang up instead of unmute.
He's now in a panic.
Here he comes.
Look at that grin.
Unbelievable. We will improve from this, Google me, I promise you.
I answered the first question, it was about bringing your electronics to school. The next question was, how will eating lunch be handled?
So lunch, just so all of you know, lunch is free to all students this year, K to 12. And so I just want you all to know that. That is an opportunity for your child to come to school and have a free lunch every single day and a free breakfast. But they will be sack lunches this year. And Mary Dixon is just working tirelessly in the kitchen. She amazes me every day, I can't believe the amount of food she is. So we are providing our families at this point, breakfast, lunch and dinner every single day. Anyone that comes to Victor Point School, that's kind of what they get and go home with, pretty amazing. But all lunches will be delivered to classrooms. They will be served to any student in the morning that says, yes, I would like a lunch. And we will be taking those to classrooms. Kids will be distanced, six feet apart, eating their lunch. And I mean, is there any more specifics I can give with that? Feel free to speak up, but kids will not be moving through the building or coming through a hot lunch line. We're asking any lunch parents, bring or send with their child that it's, their child can move through that lunch and open every single thing that they have in that lunch. Something probably that needs to be practiced, but we're not going to have other kids or teachers moving in to their lunches and helping them open milks. And we will not have microwaves in classrooms heating up food. So that's important to know, anything you send will be a cold lunch. And will need to be eaten at a desk, six feet and self-sufficient by the student.
Sophia raised her hand.
Yes, Sophia. Feel free to unmute.
Unless it was an accident. The next question was, is this all based on meeting the state metrics?
No, we're moving into hybrid no matter what. Hybrid will happen. State metrics are going down really quick. They're going down substantial every single day. But we are moving into hybrid regardless of state metrics at the K-5 level and the 6-8 level.
Will sports be able to happen this spring, for example, basketball?
You know, that's under discussion at this point. We're working with our cabinet and district office. Things have been moving so quickly that at this point, Governor Brown just approved like a few high school sports and a few things to be. But right now, it would not happen. With the metrics and the state and Governor Brown and where we're at with indoor activities, at this point it wouldn't. You're allowed six people in a gym, six feet apart at all times. And so athletics, of course, with that, those mandates would not happen.
How many kids are allowed in a classroom?
You know, our blueprint states anywhere from 16 to 18 students in a classroom. But we don't have a classroom that will go over, I think 13 or 14 is our biggest at this point. But most classes, if I gave you a most class, it's nine or 10.
What happens if a child in my kid's classroom is COVID positive?
There's 27 million things that could happen if that was the case. And that goes straight to the district nurse and OHA. And it's not like we haven't had, I know through the school district in the last six months, we've had many times where COVID has popped up or a student might have been exposed. Or certain things have taken place to where quarantines have happened. But really that's based on OHA and our district nurse, they would handle that situation immediately. And they are so detailed and they, we have logs in every classroom. We have logs for when you enter our building. We know every single student in every classroom, every day by the time they're in there. They go back thoroughly through those logs, they call parents, they do whatever it takes. And they have certain guidelines that state exactly what to do when that happens. So that's a really hard one to answer. But just know, like, everyone that I've seen, and we have not had any, but anyone that I've seen has handled so thoroughly. And I just, I feel really safe with the guidance and what's given to us. So that's really on a case-by-case basis.
Are the kids being screened when they arrive? If so, how?
They are being visually screened and we're hoping that our parents are our first screeners. And we hope that our parents aren't sending any student to school with a temperature. You know, if you give them Advil and it drops below, that's probably not the best way to do it. Any temperature they have, please keep them home, any cough, any sniffle, any headache. So our parents were relying as a first screener. When kids get to school, we'll have staff greeting at every single doorway, the kids, the child's classroom, our bus entry, our parent car pickup. We are visually screening every student, asking how they are, how they're feeling. And if we, you know, see anything that needs to be screened in that aspect, we are doing that. So we are not screening with temperatures checks or we're not screening with anything like that. But we are very vigilant and we're hoping our parents are our first line, our staff's our second line. And we're hoping our kids are honest with parents so that they, I know they want to. And we're hoping our kids are honest with parents so that they uh, I know they want to come to school, but we want to make sure that we are all safe. And it's pretty amazing this year, like I was just talking with Lisa the other day, like no one has been sick, like knock on wood, but like staff's not sick, kids aren't sick. Everyone's distance, everyone's in masks. If anyone is sick, they don't come to school. If any one of our staff is sick, they stay home. Um, so it, it's been really good.
Is there social distancing going to be possible on the bus?
You know, the bus requirements and I can, I can send you whoever wants to email me the whole Durham transportation. But yes, at least three foot spacing. We're hoping family and kids riding that are family will be the next to each other. Um, but it is three foot spacing and there are requirements around the bus, every part of the bus. The bus is sanitized with every uh, drive to school. As soon as kids are out, it's fully sanitized back. Yes.
If a child misses a day because of being sick or an appointment, how do they get their instruction? They miss that day?
Well, if they miss a school day, they will miss their instruction. Um, you know, they'll have to talk with the teacher and, and see what they missed. And just like any day they would miss in a regular school day, they would work with the teacher to get that work. And uh, that would be up to them to make that work up. And of course we'd give whatever time they needed, couple days or whatever they needed to get that up and made up. Um, but they would miss the instruction for the day like any other day.
That was the last one at the moment unless someone else is working on typing one.
What else? I, I guess I would ask our families, what else would you like me to discuss in future town halls? Um, and you don't have to comment now, but I would love some emails, just like what are some things you would like to hear more about? What are some things I can be more informative about? What would make you feel more comfortable? Um, in getting ready for next Thursday's town hall, I would love some feedback of what more would you like to hear about? How close?
How close is Marion County to meeting the required metrics?
You know, getting closer by the day. I, I don't know the exact, they come out every Monday with the brand new metrics. And so um, every day it changes and the metrics and the guidelines change due to that. And OHA creates the new metrics weekly. And so next Thursday I will bring the exact metrics where we stand. Um, and what that looks like, but we are in a rapid decline at this point, uh, which is really nice. I mean, we were, I think we only had in the entire state of Oregon, we had 339 cases the other day. Yesterday, I think it was about 550 total cases. So if you're looking at cases per day, we're there, but it's on a two-week and so it's averaged. Um, but they are steadily declining.
And then just a comment, you're doing a wonderful job. Thank you. And the Lindefords.
Well, I uh, again, I um, you know, I know it's been a trying year. It's been one of the toughest years in education that I've ever faced. And I've felt it from our parents with conversations daily and frustrations and anxiety and anger. And I, I think our staff has felt all of those as well. And um, I had a staff member remind me the other day when I was saying how this could be the worst year of education we've had. And they said, I've had a lot worse years of education. Uh, luckily we, we are in a place where we are at Victor Point and we have the most amazing staff and the amazing parents. Um, and I've been in many places where I haven't had that. And so many of my years have been much worse than this year. And that kind of put it in perspective for me after I said, oh, this is one of the worst years I've had. Uh, which it really, really rings true to me. Um, we're lucky. So.
Another question was, how will you be able to differentiate between seasonal allergies and possible other sicknesses?
You know, we're asking any families and we know most of our kids with seasonal allergies. Uh, we, we have health protocols. We know exactly which kids have those seasonal allergy, allergies. And we work with parents daily on that. Um, and so it's a simple question or, you know, uh, if we're worried about a certain cough or cold or nose or allergy, we talk with the parents, we talk with the nurses. And a lot of those kids, um, I mean, we know our kids so well and our parents are so informative for us that pretty much all of that kind of takes care of itself just through conversations and, and working with each other. Um, we're definitely not sending a kid home with a sniffle that has a seasonal allergy or a cough because of an allergy. We're going to know the difference between the two and we're going to fully communicate with parents and our, and our nurse. Any questions from kids or, or your kids that are worried about like what, what's going to happen with this? What, any anxiety from you? Like that's my biggest concern is our kids. And like, what is their anxieties? What is their fears? I, I think they're all excited to get back with peers. Um, but I know there's some fear and anxiety and they haven't been in school for about ten and a half months. So please talk to them about what their fears are if they do. And, and if we can work with them prior to them returning or reach out to them or having personal conversations, we want to do that.
Two comments and then a question. Um, we're thankful for you. Thank you for loving our kids. And in talking with other parents in other schools, I would say we are very lucky. And then the question is, what would be hap- I'm going to rephrase kind of what they're saying, but um, what is going to be happening on the days that they're not in in-person school? So they're at home days. What would that look like?
Do you want to answer that, Megan?
You're going to put me on the spot for that?
Oh, I won't put you on the spot.
I can answer the middle school. I, I mean, for six eight, I don't know what drives planning on doing.
It's different for every class and every teacher. And teachers uh, uniquely set up their class based upon how they want, what's best for their kids and what they think the off days need to look like. So I think each class will be a little different. I don't think there'll be an identical way that every staff member moves through the off days. Um, but we want them, uh, you can, you can tell our school has went away from kind of the non-engaging materials that we started the school year with. We, we heard our parents loud and clear about, we want engagement and some of this. So we're hoping that no matter they're in school or out of school, that it's very engaging curriculum, that they're working on hands-on. They are working on uh, reading, writing, uh, responding. Uh, they're going to go away from a day of school, full eight hours with a teacher. And there's going to be specific things for that student to bring back the following day. Um, and there's going to be hallelujah, a little more accountability. And uh, not that like, we haven't had, I mean, it's been hard to, for accountability. But um, yeah, we'll get to see kids every other day and send them home and bring them back. And what did we learn? And what did you do? And okay, let's move from here. Uh, and really excited about that. Go ahead, Megan.
The biggest difference I think is kind of where that question is going is that there won't be live Google meets. Um, possibly the morning meeting time, as that will be the only time that the kids would see their entire class and to make sure everyone's kind of on the same page. Um, but at school, they'll be doing more of the in-person instruction. And then at home would be more of the independent learning activities that go along with what they were learning in their in-person day. Uh, the next question is, will the kids still be going to PE during Lippi? Or being, or doing more stuff in the classroom? I'm wondering if they meant hybrid instead of Lippi.
Yeah, every, every kid will have PE every day. Uh, the same as if, so anytime they are uh, at our school, they will have a full, uh, K five will have 30-minute PE and six eight will have 45-minute PE. And I know Ms. Trager's excited about that.
And there's a question, but I wanted to make sure clarified. Um, it's hard to say in school and off days. It's not an off day. Um, it's still a school day. They're still learning. It's just not a live meet. So we're trying hard not to call it an off day, even though that kind of feels like you're either on or you're off, you're on at school. But it's not an off day. It's, it's a home learning day. And the other question is, so basically this, or it's statement, basically the school district made a decision for us, the parents. And if we don't agree with the procedures, too bad. The children will literally be going to half the class time.
Um, there's two ways to look at that. Uh, I look at it as it's two days full instruction. We get our kids back to the classroom, which they haven't been for 10 and a half months. And uh, it's the first step in getting kids back to the classroom five days a week. So I, I guess you could look at it both ways. I look at it as a huge bonus for our kids and our um, definitely socially, like kids at home on a computer, uh, learning or not, probably isn't as healthy as kids in a classroom. And what they're going to get socially from being in a classroom eight hours a day is I would say as equal to um, the other. So you know, we each have our own, right? We each have our own opinions and that's what makes life amazing. And um, w- we hope not. We hope that kids will still get the same learning. Uh, it will just be different learning, but eight days in front of a teacher in a class. And we haven't been able to do that for a long time. So um, that's the first step we need to get kids back five days a week.
And Cheryl had her hand up.
I just want to say that uh, the district was kind of forced into this decision. We cannot hold 25 kids six feet apart in one class. We do not have the space. So um, with the, with the decisions of the CDC and the OHA and all of the acronyms you can come up with, we have to be able to, to space our kids six feet apart is the reason they're going two days a week. It's a safety issue. It's not the ideal educational uh, situation. We all know that. But it is better than what we've been doing. So we have to keep a positive attitude that we're headed in the right direction, that things, this is just a short time, 10 weeks about. And that by September, maybe we'll be back full force, ready to go in a positive direction. So that's what I have to say about that.
That kind of goes with a comment um, that was put into the chat. It's the two days is the starting point so that we can get back to a five day, just like we had the Lippi to start out with. Um, they have to follow the Safe Learners Guide from OD and OHA. So again, what Cheryl was saying. And that's online also. If you look up RSSL, Real School Safe, Ready School Safe Learners. There's like a 90-page document on that.
Guys, there's a lot of red tape. There, there really is, but it's all for safety measures and, and we're taking everything serious. So um, it's a great first step and we're, we're super excited to see your kiddos. And can't wait to sing to them and uh, won't get to give them a hug or a, a fist bump, but maybe an elbow bump. And uh, we got a lot of measures in place that will be nice. So hey, next week, I got to wrap this up. We got about a minute. Um, please send me any email you would like to hear about, anything you would like me to talk about. Uh, anything I can clarify to help you or your kids. Um, and, and so we'll meet again next Thursday at six o'clock. And we'll be better at Google meets. You think we'd be like perfect right now, but and I will charge my computer. Shows you how much I've been on it. So have a great night, everyone. We'll see you soon.